Well, hello, everybody and welcome. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Next clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And we have up for approval the minutes of the day meeting from the City Council meeting of September 28.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the City Council minutes from the regular day meeting of September 28, 2021.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to note, I'll be abstaining as I wasn't here last week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Your motion in second, clerk, we call the roll.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we have one thing under special business. October is Disability Employment Awareness Month. And for that, I was asked to sign and read a proclamation today so that all of us could mark it together. And so with that, I will read this proclamation which I signed earlier today. Whereas October 2021 marks the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas in 1962, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment needs and contributions of individuals with all types of disabilities. And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm our city's commitment to an inclusive community that increases access and opportunities to all, including those with disabilities. Now, therefore, I, Lauren McLean, Mayor Boise, do hereby proclaim October to be National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the city of Boise. And I call upon all employers, schools, and other community organizations in our city to observe October with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to our workplaces and communities. And with that, this is officially marking October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Thank you all for letting me do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Move a motion in second, clerk.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I will be abstaining from number four, Resolution 46621, as it pertains to Jacob's Engineering.
Right. Thank you. All right, clerk, with that, will you call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have nothing on first or second reading, but we do have one ordinance on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 4321 be dispensed with and that the record reflected has been read for the third time in full.
Second. Motion in second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I will call the roll.
Woodings. Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries. ORD-43-21, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title III, Chapter III, Section 9 Retailers License to amend the expiration date. Amending Boise City Code Title III, Chapter IV, Section 9, expiration of permit to amend the expiration date. Amending Boise City Code Title IV, Chapter III, Section 2, license fee required transferability to amend the issuance date and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ORD 4321.
Second. Move a motion in a second, any discussion? All right, clerk, can you call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, under new business, we have some public hearings this evening. The first one is CPA 21-3, Ada County Highway District. And we have Crystal with us this evening to present from Planning and Development Services for the city. And I saw, I think I saw Becky McKay and/or Gary Inselman. Yes, okay. Representing the applicant. And we do not have anybody signed up in advance. Is anybody here for this? Is anyone online? Yes, we do have some folks online, so I would just ask if they want to speak on this topic for them to raise their hands. Great. We'll go ahead and get started and then just let me know if folks have raised their hands. Great. Welcome, Crystal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Item before you is a comprehensive planned land use of map amendment to address the Boise City area of impact. And annex five parcels and associated right-of-ways. The subject area is located on the north side of Franklin Road, approximately a quarter mile west of Cloverdale Road. The subject parcels are currently in the jurisdiction of unincorporated Ada County, split between the Meridian and Boise areas of impact. The Ada County Highway District requests a land use map amendment to blueprint Boise to incorporate the full subject area, 8.39 acres into the Boise City area of impact with a land use designation of industrial. Also included is a request for annexation of all five parcels and adjacent Union Pacific Railroad and Franklin Road right-of-ways for a total of 12.75 acres zoned M1D light industrial with design review zone. As outlined in your packets, the proposed development is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and with the recommended conditions of approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds the request to be consistent with the standards for approval. And as noted in the minutes, recommended approval of the application with conditions on the consent agenda at the August 9. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Crystal?
Madam Mayor. Just one quick question. The approval includes land on the rail corridor. I didn't see any real mention of that. I just assumed that that was included because then it carried the application across the corridor.
Correct, yes. And if you look at the map that it's up, it does include that section there.
Okay, thank you. So no plans to use a corridor as part of this? Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, Gary, are you presenting? Someone from ACHD?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions 1029 North Rosario. I'm representing the applicant Ada County Highway District on this particular parcel. Do you have any questions that I could answer? I think the staff kind of gave you a summary of the application that's before you. The city of Meridian has consented to releasing some of this area out of their area of city impact because these five parcels are split between Boise City and Meridian. Meridian has industrial, we are requesting industrial, requesting M1D zoning. This will be a traffic operations facility and ACHD will be consolidating some of their activities that they have at Adams Street that they've outgrown that facility to this Boise site. And we have utilities that are existing, so can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Looks like we're good, thank you so much. Is there anyone here for this?
Madam Mayor, there is not.
Okay. With that, are there further questions for staff? Confirming that nobody was here to testify on this, so with all closed public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval, I think we have two of CAR 21-21.
Microphone line.
Oh.
I apologize, I'll start over. I move approval of CAR 21-21, Ada County Highway District, 4330 East Franklin Road. Compact, comprehensive plan, land use, map amendment, and adjustment to the Boise City area of city impact boundary on 8.39 acres and the CAR is assigning an industrial designation of M1D.
Second. Your motion in second, any? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just applaud ACHD for finding what looks to be a very good central location for facilities that they've outgrown and look forward to seeing this go forward.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the CPA 21-03, which is the land use map amendment and city of Boise City area of impact boundary change for this parcel.
Second.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have CAR 21-19. And then we've got Kevin here, welcome, for the city. Ben is typically on Zoom. Ben Semple. We don't have Neighborhood Association signed up and nobody from the public has signed up. Is anybody here for this one? Alrighty. If you're online and you'd like to speak on this one, just raise your hand and we'll work through it when we get to that point. Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you can be pretty quick with this one, members of council. Before you use a request to rezone approximately 2.6 acres from an A1 to an R1B zone located at 9419 West Sheep Avenue. So the property shown here in red is located just to the north of the interstate and to the west of Maple Grove. As you can see here on the zoning map, the property is just this little pocket of A1 zoning between one acre lots zoned R1A to the west and townhomes zoned R2D to the east. So we've not received any public comments at all in regards to this application. And we do believe that the requested R1B zoning does provide a logical transition between these two surrounding zones, and it is supported by the comprehensive plan. So with that as detailed in your project packet, the Planning and Zoning Commission did find that the request did comply with the standards of approval and has recommended approval. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. This project does run along the farmer's lateral canal, but it also abuts, I think, the connector or the freeway. Was there any discussion or has there been any discussion as far as a pathway or is there any connection opportunities there with that pathway?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, yeah, we did look at that. You are correct, the lateral or the irrigation facility does run there. But it does dead end right at I-84. And then to the, you can see in the aerial there, we have basically storage, a pretty substantial storage facility there, so there's not really much to connect to.
Anything else? All right. Ben, we'll head on to the applicant. Ben, are you with us? Hi there.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Yeah, I want to thank Kevin for his presentation. Pretty straightforward application for a rezone to help the current owner divide this piece of property. He's going to continue to live on the site, rebuild a house for himself and at least one of his acquaintances and then have a couple other lots to redevelop as single-family uses. Touching on Councilmember Halliburton's question, there isn't really an opportunity, the canal actually crosses the freeway or goes underneath the freeway at this point, I believe, to the south, so there's really no opportunity for connectivity through here with any sort of pathway. And other than that, I would stand for any questions.
It looks like there are none today, Ben. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
And just to confirm, is anyone here to sign up? Anybody here to talk on this one? An online?
Madam Mayor, I have no one online with their hand raised.
Okay. Well, we will then go ahead and close this public hearing as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of CAR 21-19, Rodney Evans and Partners, 9419 West Sheep Avenue, rezone of 2.6 acres from A1 to R1B.
Second. Move a motion in second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to make the quick comment. A couple of us were chatting a little bit about about how creative Ben is with making these little pocket infill developments throughout the city. And so whenever I see one of his, it's like, oh, I wonder what that's going to be. And so it's a really great way to build a little bit of density into these areas in these little pocket lots. And you're just doing a great job and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, clerk.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries.
Well, thank you. And next up, our final agenda item for the evening is CAR 21-20 and CPA 21-2. We have Cody here to present for the city because we are technically the applicant of this. The Neighborhood Association is South Cole. Is South Cole online?
Madam Mayor, I have an Alex, whoops, excuse me, and my screen just shifted, bear with me a moment. Alex Drexel and Justine Hatton. I'm not sure what they're here for, who they're representing, however.
Okay. And are there others here to testify on this? Was that a, sir, was that a yes or a no? Okay. Deb and okay, and then you're here to answer questions. And you, ma'am, are you here to testify or just because you just got to be here? Okay, great. And then online, are there people that are raising their hands to testify?
No, they are not raising their hands, but there are two online. Oh, we do have one now that has raised their hand to speak.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll start here in the room and then we'll check in online again. Go ahead, Cody, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This item includes two applications. First, the annexation of two properties, an 128, roughly 128 acres of school district property, and then another roughly four acres that belongs to the Boise Airport. Both are located on the south side of Victory Road, east of Maple Grove. The second application is a request to amend the land use map of Blueprint Boise. The request is to change the designation of approximately 15 acres from education to mixed use. That area does represent only a portion of the larger school district property. The district is under contract to sell this property to a private company for future development. They're not associated in any way with future plans for the 15-acre parcel and have no plans to further develop the remainder of their property. They have always anticipated annexation, and so the desire is to annex their entire property there with one application process. The commission, as you saw on the record, did hear these applications back in August. They were originally part of a much larger proposal that included an annexation and map amendment for the roughly 150-acre property to the south known as the Magrddio site. That portion of the request was withdrawn prior to the commission hearing. However, as you probably saw on the record, the legal notice had already gone out and this led to a bit of confusion at the hearing initially. However, that was clarified through the staff presentation and then a series of questions by the commission. Noticing sense, including for this evening, has since been updated to accurately reflect what is before you this evening. As you saw on the record, the commission did find the annexation to be consistent with the requirements of Boise City Code. The properties abut city limits and are located within the area, city's area of impact and sewer planning area. Comments received by public agencies confirm services are available to the site. The annexation will actually have minimal cost, minimal impact to cost of services, again, because the property is adjacent, immediately adjacent to land, already served and within the city. And then much of that surrounding area is already being served by those urban services. With annexation, you will need to assign zoning district to each of the two properties. In the case of the airport properties, the requested zone or M1D Limited or Light Industrial with Design Review is consistent with the existing land use designation. The A1 zone or open land zone is requested for the remaining property. I think it's important to note that that open land zone will ensure that a subsequent public process occurs prior to any intensification for the use of that property. The commission did also support the land use map amendment. The proposal is to change the designation again of only that 15 acres from education to mixed use. But specific development is not proposed at this time. When that occurs, the applicant will need to go through an entirely new neighborhood meeting, planning and zoning, and city council process. I do think it's fair to say that the change to mixed use is a nod to the idea that the use of that site will certainly intensify. This isn't something, again, that the district will be a part of. A separate private entity, who I believe is represented and could speak tonight, is here. They aren't here to discuss specific plans, but to just speak generally perhaps to what they have in mind. From the commission's perspective and the staff perspective, the change is necessary for the general welfare of the community. Given the change in ownership, the education, the designation of education no longer makes sense for the property. The mixed use designation will facilitate development of housing and potentially a mix of uses that make more sense in this location. It is a location where services and amenities are readily available. And again, and most importantly, any redevelopment of that site will require a subsequent and separate public process where folks can testify. So with that, we are recommending approval of the applications this evening. The commission did find the applications to be consistent with the standards for approval. I would note, we do have representatives of the airport, school district, and of that 15-acre parcel here this evening, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Cody, just to clarify, we'd noticed originally for a larger annexation, some property has fallen out of that annexation, but in any event, everybody who is entitled to notice for this application received it, and if anything, I guess we overnoticed.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Agent, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any questions for Cody?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Cody, just for the record, right now, the property is already being served by the Whitney Fire District, which the city of Boise manages through a contract. Will anything change in terms of fire response to this site?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, no, the comments from Fire included in the packet indicate no change to service to the site.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Same with the police department. Right now, I think we already provide some school resource officers to this site. Currently, it would otherwise be served, I think, by county sheriffs, but it's my understanding there won't be any anticipated new high demand for service if we annex this. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like that's it for now, Cody, thank you. So South Cole Neighborhood Association? Cody, do you know the person representing South Cole Neighborhood Association, if they might be online?
I don't.
It is too big.
I don't believe they testified. There's no indication that they would be here this evening, I guess.
All right, we didn't get an indication that they would be. And with that, we'll go ahead and have the two people that are here to read into the record come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Deborah Nelson with Givens Persley, 601 West Bannock Street here in Boise. I represent Well Tower Inc., who has the 15-acre property under contract from the school district and plans to pursue applications for a future residential project here. Alex Drexel, who you noted was on the Zoom, he's with Leighton Construction, he's also part of the development team, and he's just available if there's further questions. We are here to testify in support of the annexation and comp plan applications before you this evening. The change to mixed use designation is appropriate here. The school district no longer needs this property for school purposes and mixed use will support a variety of zones and uses, including housing. Given the proposed A1 zoning, as Cody just noted, no development will be able to proceed here until future public process, applications, neighborhood meetings, public hearings proceed. It also will require a traffic impact study. But we do want to let you know that Well Tower has already begun that public outreach process with a meeting with the neighbors last week to start to talk about what they're thinking here. And that will be continued with further outreach, another neighborhood meeting as they approach any formal applications to the city. So again, just wanted to let you know where we are in our process and let you know the support for the city's applications. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Come on up, sir.
David Benoit, 407 West O'Farrell, Boise, 83702. I'm also here in favor of annexation. Annexation in general, I think it's great, especially in this circumstance. It's a good opportunity for the Boise School District to sell off a chunk of land that net some a decent amount of money. I think the impact fees that will be collected off of the development will go to parks and the fire department, all things that are kind of needed in this area. And I also think annexation of this parcel will lead to annexation of other subsequent parcels that will also lead to more impact fees, lead to more money going to the parks, et cetera, et cetera. So definitely in favor.
Thank you. Okay, is anybody online that wishes to speak on this? It sounds like the two people that were online were part of the development team. Okay. Well, the school district's here to answer questions if anybody has them. Yep. Madam Mayor, I have a Justine Hatton and a Keith Marissa. Oh, Marissa Keith is the Neighborhood Association. Not South Cole, that's Swaka. But so sure, we'll have, why don't you just go in that order, that's fine. Okay. Go ahead. Justine Hatton.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you, Justine.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm just here, I just was here to talk about that 4.25 acres between Victory and Elder.
Sure, go ahead.
I live in the, on Raymond Street, south of that area. And years ago, we fought to keep our little neighborhood here large lot residential. And I'm just concerned that if you change that property to industrial, and what that will do to our properties here.
All right. And thank you for letting us know, actually, thank you for calling in and joining, just to participate in general. Any?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Justine, this is Council President Clegg and just assure you that if a development application does come forward on those 15 acres, there will be a full public hearing and an outreach process to the neighborhood. Before that happens, they, the developer and their representative is now aware of your concern, so I expect you'll have a chance to give them your input even before that public hearing.
The public hearing, because today will not change anything. It will go, it will go to further hearings.
Sure, go ahead.
If we approve the application today, we will change the potential for the 15 acres to be rezoned from something other than the A1 that it is today. But it will not be the rezone, we will just But it will not be the rezon. We will just designate on the comprehensive plan map that that's possible.
The four point two five acres?
I didn't, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So it will get changed in, tonight, to industrial. That's my concern is that it gets changed to industrial.
Oh, the industrial. I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding which property you were talking about. Yes, it will be rezoned to industrial.
No matter what anybody says.
Well, Justine, I'll jump in here.
Yeah.
Okay, we've heard, we've heard from staff, we've heard from you and others, and then council will deliberate on this, but it has been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission that this be rezoned. And next up is Marissa Keith. Hi, Marissa.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Marissa Keith, thirty-two seventy-nine, South Cloverdale, Boise, and here representing the Southwest data county alliance and Swaka and South Cole both testified at P N Z. We kind of did it together.
Okay, yeah.
We, we use the same, the same space of time to do that. But anyhow, I just wanted to say it's a little bit unusual, at least in my experience, for an annexation and rezon to come, come up without the corresponding development application. And I know that's coming in the works. I've seen the plan for that, so we'll get to that at some later date, but just to remind the council that any time an annexation or rezon is requested, it may be a good opportunity to work with that developer to get that long thought after affordable housing worked into that development. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Marissa. I appreciate that. And sorry about the confusion on my end. I hadn't realized that you and South Cole had shared your time last time around.
Oh, that's okay. And I was a little bit late to, to the, the party tonight, so.
Yeah, we, had we heard your name right away, we would have pulled you in at the beginning, but thanks for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Are you here for this? You're just, you're just here for the theater this evening? Great, okay. Is there anyone else online?
Madam Mayor, I have no one else online with their hand raised.
Okay, all right. Any further questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just follow up with a question for staff, just to try to get some clarity for maybe the question that was answered earlier. So I, my understanding is that the area that you've got with the dash lines right now, where the school is at, that's where there's a pending sale going on. And then the four point two five acres is being proposed to be M one D Light Industrial with Design Review. Is there a reason that M one D Light Industrial with the Design Review was identified as the best use for that particular slot?
Sure, Madam Mayor, councilmember Hallie Burton. The M one D, the M one D zoning that's requested, that's for the airport properties over, over here, further down Victory. That property of the underlying land use map already designates that as, as an, as industrial. So actually, a residential zone would be, would be prohibited as an implementing zone. I would note that further south, though, the, the land use designation there switches, switches to residential and there's no proposal to change that. So that industrial would be limited only to the airport's property out on Victory Road.
Great, Madam Mayor, just a quick follow up. So with, with that clarity, and that was super helpful, Cody, if, if I'm a neighbor and I see something that is, is a rezoned to that, what can I potentially expect to see in that type of property?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Hallie Burton, given the limited size of the property, I mean, the airport's total property, that four, four point two acres we're talking, it'd be quite limited. I mean, you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to support a large scale industrial user. You often see storage facilities, things like that, but certainly industrial type users. It is owned, again, by the Boise Airport and so the city does have control over what, what will occur there.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just one more question about the M one D portion of this. If a development proposal came forward on that land, given that it is directly adjacent, although across the street from land that's designated to remain residential, what will be the requirements in terms of compatibility and transition?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Clegg, it would depend on the specific use. Certainly, if it's some of the allowed uses, we would need to mitigate that simply through design review, increased setbacks, screen walls, landscaping. If it was one of the conditional, conditional uses, we could certainly look at hours of operation, days of the week, things like that.
And might note that this is M one, not M two. So light industrial and the D means that it would have to go through a design review, which is where the mitigation would occur. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Clegg, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Cody, it looks like that's it. I just wanted to give everybody one more chance. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of CAR twenty-one dash twenty, city of Boise, annexation of approximately one hundred and twenty-eight acres located at eighty-three seventy-three West Victory Road with A one open zoning and four point two five acres located at sixty-seven fifty-five West Victory Road with M one D Light Industrial with Design Review zoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I agree. I'll be voting yes. It's consistent with all of our requirements for annexation. And then as to the land use issue, you know, we have to zone it something and this is how it's presently presented on our land use map. I think it's also helpful, the question, the discussion we had in the questioning about the further opportunities for impact mitigation, some public input based on what we, you know, based on what we know, when we know what will be built there in the future. So given that we have to zone it something, and this is what the land use map says, it makes sense to me.
Right. With that, clerk, go ahead and call the roll. Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of CPA twenty-one dash two, city of Boise, amendment to the land use map of Blueprint Boise to change the designation of approximately fifteen acres located at eighty-three seventy-three West Victory Road from education to mixed use.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I didn't comment on the annexation because I thought it was pretty straightforward. Nothing will change, at least for the city of Boise, in terms of how we service it today, given the use. This particular piece of this, I think, does offer a great opportunity for some additional housing, very near educational uses, very near other uses that are growing to the east of here with a lot of jobs. I, I know that that's not currently maybe what, what is being proposed here, but it's, it is a great location to consider those kinds of uses. And so I'm happy to make this land use map amendment so that we get an opportunity to do just that.
Great, thank you. Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
I thought this was a two hour meeting. This was not a two hour meeting.
It was not.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call it? All in favor.
Aye.
Most, we're adjourned.